All right, so here we go. Welcome to the April 27th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. In accordance with Executive Order N 29-20, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. And Ryan, will you please do your, do, we can take the roll call one of those days?
Yes, Chair. Supervisor Bone?
Hi.
Supervisor Wilson?
Present.
Supervisor Madron?
Here.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah.
And Supervisor Bass?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's always good when we get back through that part. So, um, so we will start off saluting the flag, and I see Ryan's got the flag ready. All right, so please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ryan, beautiful flag. All right, so with that, launch into how this meeting is going to run. For those of you who do want to call in and make comment at some point in time today, raise your hand by pressing star nine at the beginning of the item you'd like to talk on. And when it's your turn to speak, you'll press star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes. Once you call in and you're listening on the phone, if you intend to call and ask a question, turn the volume on your TV down or your video if that's what you're watching, because there's a time delay that really confuses people, and you could very likely lose your opportunity to comment if you were listening to the TV and not the phone. So just remember when you call in, listen to what's on the phone, not what's on the screen. I'm strict on the three-minute rule, so don't take it personally. I want to make sure everyone has the same opportunity to speak to the board. So when you have 30 seconds left, you'll hear this sound. And that lets you know that you have 30 seconds to wrap up. And then you will be thanked and will be muted at that point. As again, don't take it personally, because it's the same for everyone. Also, I do think it's important to have a break. And usually I can tell you when that might be, but I'm not so sure today, so we'll play it by ear. So at this point, I'll head over and ask our CIO their modifications, agenda. Yo, Neilson?
Good morning, Chair Bass. There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. And there was a little bit of an echo on you there, Chair, so hopefully that gets taken care of, at least on my end.
I'll ask, maybe Brooke can come in. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, because I have nothing on in here.
I don't hear the echo.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. At this time, I will head out to see if there-
I don't believe we had a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought, sorry.
I seconded myself, I think, maybe.
Whatever works. I think Steve was ready to third. I see, I'm raising, raising his hand there. So, all right, we'll go to the attendees to see if there's anyone who wants to make comment. We do have one. Again, if you are on the phone and you wish to comment on this specific item, press star nine now. And we will go to our first public speaker, I believe it's. Dottie, welcome.
Good morning. Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. I just wanted to make a comment about the grant funding that is being proposed as far as Southern Humboldt's group working on advocacy and the Arcata House partnership. So I think it's great that they applied for a grant. I certainly think that it should be approved. And then we should go a little step further with two things. With these two groups, it should be very transparent as to what they're doing and what is available. And I'd like to see some additional funding so that we can get the 2-1-1 and the resources that are available on the card again that used to be at the sheriff's station, so that when they find somebody that is needing resources, that it's available and easy to access. So good for you for supporting resources for all of Humboldt County and especially Southern Humboldt, my concern. And think in the future of how we can all work together, because if we work together instead of battling against each other for funds or anything else, we'll get a lot more done. So thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. And you were the only person who was on to make comments. So at this time, we will close public comment on the consent calendar. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a very brief comment on the Trellis item on the agenda. Very happy it's back here today. I want to thank staff for their incredible efforts to get this back with all the redacted proposals. And I want to thank the Trellis Committee. They've been working really hard, a lot of proposals to review. I was very pleased to see all the various items that are being approved here today, including bringing in jute, jute netting rather than the poly netting. And fantastic, someday I hope we can make that jute out of local hemp or local stalks, not hemp, local stalks from cannabis, right? That'd be pretty cool. But at any rate, co-ops of sun-grown local, water sustainability, workshops, education on sustainable practices, road upgrades, meeting ADA requirements, water storage, fire hazard reduction, and appellations of origin are just some of the proposals that are being approved. And very glad that this is in front of us today. And I congratulate everybody, including those that did not get funded, but hopefully we can work with those to help them become more competitive in the future. So just wanted to offer my thanks to the committee and the staff on that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. So with that, I don't see any of the board members' hands up. Ryan, would you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass? Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
You pass this five oh.
And we'll move on now to the public comment on items not on the agenda. And this is where members of the public can speak for three minutes on any topic not on the agenda. The board will not have any discussion or take any action on any of these comments that come up. At this point, there is no one with their hand. So we do have one. Again, if you plan to comment under this period, please do press star nine, so we know. And at this point, we have the, we have a couple. So first, back to Dottie. Welcome, Dottie. You've got three minutes.
So once again, we're looking at the situation in Garberville as far as what happened with the Christian Science Church and people that were unhoused. So something that's happened that I think we all need to be aware of is that within three months, less than three months, all of the things that were needed were suddenly approved for people that were creating a bit of a hassle. So I think if it could be done in three months, then it shouldn't have taken the whole process and losing a building that shouldn't have been lost. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I'd like to see code enforcement work with the agencies that are supporting people that are helpless, because a lot of the code enforcement has to do with people that aren't getting resources and are not housed. Thus, they become a problem, and then we have code enforcement when resources could have been given. The other thing is that I'd like, I'd like to bring it to your attention that there is somebody working in code enforcement that I don't think is, is acting in the best interest of all of our residents. And this person is working on a code enforcement issue with, on my property. And I'd like to find out how I request somebody different to be my code enforcement contact. And then, this is unusual, but I'd also like to say that Shawna worked tirelessly. She's in code enforcement. She worked tirelessly with tremendous compassion, trying really, really hard to access whatever resources that she could have and, and could find. So I think she needs to have an award. I think that those are the kinds of people that you need to have in code enforcement. It ended up bad, but that wasn't her choice. But necessarily, maybe it was. But she was very gracious and very respectful, and I really, really appreciate that. So I've worked with two code enforcement people that have been really fabulous and one that I prefer not to have any interaction with in the future. So I don't know how to make that happen so that that's removed from, from my daily dialogue, but I'd like to have some help with that. And I want to say thank you so much to Michelle Bushnell for coming and hearing my plea and some of the things that I need and being so respectful and, and taking the time. So Michelle, thank you. Shawna, thank you. And to the rest of you, I'm glad we're working together. Thanks.
Thank you, Dottie. And our second speaker has, so he's calling user number one. Just press star six to unmute. You are on the phone with your hand raised, because there's only one. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. Hey, this is Corey again. I just wanted to go over a few things from this last year. It's been 411 days to flatten the curve. I see on the agenda, there's no talk of COVID, yet we still have orders in effect. We have the mask order, which I requested to be rescinded last year. And we can see the effects of that. Businesses being asked to enforce things that are outside their domain. I just wonder how Supervisor Wilson, remember last year we brought up it would be easier to stick people in evacuation centers? I would like to know how that CDC guidance with the shielding, whether the county's looking into that, planning on implementing shielding at any time in the future. I remember Supervisor Bass mentioned that we just keep the emergency in place because it's easier to get the money. It's been 411 days since the sheriff signed an emergency order that has to be revoted on every seven days with the law stating that upon the introduction of a contagious disease, communicable disease, is the emergency. So we're no longer in a state of emergency, which I already said last year. It just doesn't make sense where the board is going with this. I wonder, is the board going to plan to implement vaccine passports since that is the next item on this agenda for the COVID? Obviously, the mask is here. What is, what is the criteria for removing the mask? Is it going to be the vaccine? That would be my question. It just seems like we've, we've, we're walking down a road of danger. We're still looking here, we're still on Zoom. So the rights of the people, First Amendment, to peaceably assemble and petition for redress of grievances has been violated for a whole year. And we no longer have, or there's nowhere stipulated in the Constitution that emergency trumps the Constitution, so it just doesn't make sense. I'd also like to know, did the board ever work with Kevin Kiley? Seventeen counties in Northern California.
Yeah, 32.
Community, yeah. So the Communities for a Healthy California, like, did the board ever get involved with that? Kevin Kiley won his lawsuit against the governor for an injunction. Obviously, that went to appeal because the governor couldn't let it go. But I'd just like to see some common sense revisited instead of following along this agenda. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. So those are our only two public speakers. We'll go back to the board and move on to the next item. And this is a special item. It's nice to have some fun things on the agenda every once in a while. And it's coming to us from Supervisor Bushnell. It's for resolution honoring the life and career of Starla Fay Early. And we have a couple of special guests, I think, here as well. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, Chair Bass. I would like to have Mike read the resolution for us. And then also, I would like to recognize Jenny Early is on with us, who is Starla's daughter.
Welcome, Mike.
Well, you know, I would love to do that, Michelle. I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry. So would you please read it? And I will agree with it wholeheartedly.
Yes, I will.
We had that same problem when he was sheriff.
Yeah, I know. Thanks, Rec.
Where Starla Fay Early began her career with the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office in 1984, and where Starla served in numerous roles with the sheriff's office, including matron, legal office assistant, and senior legal office assistant. And where Starla became a very trusted confidant and resource to several sheriff's office supervisors who were assigned to the Garberville Station during her career. And where Starla provided valuable insight, historical perspective, and valued guidance to countless new deputies whose first assignment was at the Garberville Station. And where Starla was a fantastic cook and would frequently have delicious foods available to those who were fortunate enough to be assigned to the Garberville Station. And where Starla provided valuable information and trusted direction to many who sought assistance during her 20-plus years while serving for the different elected sheriffs of Humboldt County. And where Starla worked her entire career serving the people of Southern Humboldt County with compassion, dignity, insightful wisdom, and humor. Where Starla passed away on April 24th, 2020, her legacy of service to her community, both as sheriff, as a sheriff's employee and in her private life, where will be remembered for many years. Now, therefore, be it resolved at the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, by this resolution hereby honor Starla Fay Early in memorandum for her many years of service and dedication to the citizens of Humboldt County.
Thank you. Sheriff Downey? I figured you might have one to add.
Good morning. Yeah, I, I was honored to be able to attend the memorial over the weekend and read that resolution. I want to thank the board for that. I, I actually worked with Starla for, closely for probably 10 years when I was a sergeant and deputy down in Garberville. So I, I got to know her very well. She was the, the heart and soul of the Garberville Station. I don't know how else to put it. I, I think I referred to us like, her as like the den mother of the Garberville Office when she was there. She took care of everybody. If you needed to know anything or you needed to have any insight on anything, she knew it all. And, but, but not in a, in a negative way, in a very positive way. And she was just a joy to be around. I think I mentioned on Saturday, I can't remember her ever having a bad day, even though I'm sure she did. We all do. But she brought sunshine into the office, and she was an excellent employee and surely missed after she left the station. And as, and today, obviously, she's, she's missed by her family and friends. And it was, it was a great, it was great to come together and honor her. I want to thank Michelle Bushnell for her efforts in getting this resolution put forward. And I want to thank the board for this resolution. I think it's very fitting and, and a way to honor Starla. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that and follow what Mike said real quick and just say thanks to Michelle for doing that. I'll try not to get emotional. I appreciate everything, as well as the rest of you guys with the Board of Supervisors and the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office for putting together that last call. It was really touching, and it meant a lot to my family to have that read, the resolution on Saturday. And so thank you guys so much.
Thank you for being here with us. Supervisor Bone?
Well, she wasn't the Southern Humboldt Sheriff. I thought you guys just, all those years, she was the Southern Humboldt Sheriff, and you guys all worked for her.
You're right. You're right, Rec.
I didn't know her very well, but she was a force to be reckoned with, and they answered to her. So Jenny, great to see you. And then, and Michelle, great recognition for somebody that really put it all on the line in a different way to make Humboldt a better place.
All right, no, very, very nice. I do want to see if there's anyone in the public who might be wanting to comment on this item. At the moment, there are no hands that are raised. So we will go back to the board and see if any other supervisors have a comment or if there's a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve. Or I'll second Michelle's approved motion.
All right, so if I heard that correctly, Supervisor Bushnell made a motion and Supervisor Bone seconded it. If that's all right with everybody. Okay. Any further discussion? I would just say, I'm really sorry I didn't ever know, know your mom, Jenny. And she sounds like she really had these guys on her toe, on their toes. It's nice that they all remember her very fondly, as well as does the community.
She definitely kept them fed.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, just a thanks, you know, to really everybody that helps keep these memories alive about, for these folks that, in our community, in that, you know, as we say, it's like this fabric of society, you know, often gets frayed on the edges. And these are the people that really help tie those pieces together to keep it all going. Because quite frankly, you know, unless we have these sort of civilly-minded people who really dedicate their, their lives to holding it together, it, it quite frankly can fall apart in, in a moment's notice. And so I just, just, you know, it's important to have these, these moments, and I appreciate everyone in that, you know, beyond just the commitment of the, of the person we're honoring today.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to say that through, throughout my entire life in Southern Humboldt, Starla was, I, you would see her, you would go to the sheriff's department, she would be there. Oftentimes, when I went to the sheriff's department, I didn't really want to talk to a deputy. I wanted to talk to Starla. And she just knew everything and could direct me to where I wanted to go. She was a beautiful woman and very elegant and very known for her, her classiness and her love for animals. And I have missed her a lot in the last year. And I'm glad to be able to honor her today with this resolution. But more than anything, she just, there is avoidance in Southern Humboldt with her gone. And keeping her memory alive and what she meant to Southern Humboldt is just really important, and I'm glad we're able to do this today.
All right, well, thank you for bringing it to us. And with that, we'll do a roll call. Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
A big yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Of course.
Thank you. Pass this five oh.
All right, so thank you for joining us today, both Jenny and Mike. I don't want to call Sheriff Downey, so. Always a sheriff, I think. Okay. So with that, we will move on to our next item. This is one that comes to us from Supervisors Bone and Bushnell, and it's regarding potential position on SB 271. So I'm not sure which one of you would like to tackle that. Supervisor Bone?
I'll run first. This kind of came under my radar, it was under my radar and then because RCRC and a few other places. I, first and foremost, this sounds really great coming from a senator from San Francisco, but our problem is, is there's over, well over a third, almost 40% of our counties have over 100,000 people in Humboldt and, and the state of California. And the sheriffs are working sheriffs. I mean, I can tell you, it isn't a lot, but a few times I've seen our own sheriff having people pulled over, giving, giving them a ticket. They're a working sheriff. They're not a manager, they're not a executive. They are a working sheriff who needs to know law because they have to step in. And then you get down to, we've got 15 counties that have over, less than 50,000 people. So you're getting down to forces of 20 and 30 guys where if there's a, an outbreak of any sickness or a big event, they are working sheriffs. And something like this, we have other positions, and we know sometimes if somebody's not qualified and they get into one of these positions, there can be problems. So, I mean, I don't want an 18-year-old being our DA, and I, you know, I don't want, I, not that I have against anything against 18-year-olds, but this is an infinite position. This is a pretty tough position. They take training in Quantico, they have annual, they have meetings, I think four times a year with trainings with the other sheriffs on best practices. And something like this coming forward, it, it's just like a lot of bills. There'll be 8,000 bills in front of the Assembly and the Senate this year, and some just don't make sense. And to me, this one doesn't make a lot of sense unless you're trying to tip the scales politically. And I think it's the best person who moves up. There's, there's 40,000 people that are, have their post accreditation in the state of California. Any of those can run for an elected sheriff position. So it's not a lack of people, it's the right people. So I just thought this, and, and with talking with our own sheriff and seeing, just two weeks ago, he had a quarterly meeting. I think there were 44 sheriffs out of the 58 were up here. And this was on the discussion. And, and I think their, their group is highly opposed to it. So I, I think to jump on the bandwagon that everybody's jumping on is, is bad timing, and it does not serve the smaller counties very well. It doesn't serve them at all. So that's why I brought it forward. And, and Supervisor, I'll let her speak. Supervisor Bushnell had some of the same issues because of the, I've, I've had the sheriff out on calls in my district on a phone call. So it's important that we have that contact and the training that they can jump in and do it. So that's my feelings for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bushnell, would you wish to add?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, so I, I became aware of this and did some investigation on it. And my, my issue is with the small counties in California, oftentimes you have one sheriff and three deputies, and that sheriff is part of the patrol. And so I think that it could limit the dual use of a sheriff. Also, as, I've been a boss for a long time. And I, when I hire someone, I'm, I'm capable to do their job. And I think that it's really important that when you have a sheriff, that they know what the job is, that they've been an active sheriff and have patrols and know, have that good understanding. I think with this law, or this bill, we could lose that. Being in touch with your deputies and knowing what they're, they're up against or what they're going to is a huge part of being a very successful boss and, and being able to have that camaraderie with your deputies. I think it's really important. I, I have a lot of concerns about this bill.
Sheriff, did you want to add anything? You're, you're, I won't call you, I mean, you are a sheriff. Mike, I just called him sheriff.
He's my sheriff too, Sheriff Mike Downey. He's always going to be sheriff. So, yeah, for sure. So I appreciate Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bushnell bringing this forward for discussion and, and possibly taking opposition and sending a letter to, to the Senate. This is a very important bill for small counties. And that's why I think it's very, very important that we have this discussion and that it is brought up and that, that we do take this kind of thing on the state level very seriously. As, as I point out, that small sheriffs are working sheriffs. And these aren't just managers, these aren't just CEOs of, of big corporation or like a city manager. We're not just managing resources. We have to have that intimate knowledge about how law works within the state of California. And this law has been in place for about 30, 35 years, okay? The Senate and legislature put this law together. Before that law, there was no requirements to run for sheriff. Anyone could run for sheriff. And so they felt the need, you know, 35 years ago, to put a law into place to add requirements. The state of California leads the way in how we train and, and keep up on training as far as law enforcement goes. And there's been discussions on the state level, you know, about, you know, raising the, the minimum age, you know, to be in law enforcement, also raising the educational- the minimum age, you know, to be in law enforcement, also raising the educational requirements to be law enforcement, not just twenty-one and a GED. So if we're thinking about the entry level of law enforcement officers getting higher training and better training and more education, more exposure, then why wouldn't we require that for the chief executive of the sheriff's office? And so I would definitely think that this is something that small counties do want to weigh in on and that they do want to have a sheriff that has experience. The, you know, there are nine counties in the state that have over a million population, okay? So the other counties have less than a million, we have, I think it's something like over half have less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand. These are small counties and where the sheriffs are doing everything, they're a part of the, they're leading the coroner's office, the jail, supervising patrol operations. And so bringing someone in with next to none experience, next to no experience would be detrimental to a small county. So if there are issues, you know, some of the larger county sheriffs, you know, some people take issue with some of their stance, I don't think that's a problem here in our county. I try to be someone that is, you know, not far right, far left, is right in the middle and be able to listen. I think that's an important aspect to that being a sheriff is not taking a political stance, but taking a stance what's best for the people. And I think that having this requirement, which is a post-advanced certificate, which essentially means that if you have a master's degree, you need that certificate with four years of experience and then all the way up to an A degree, which takes nine years' experience. So, you know, from four to nine years, you can get, you know, law enforcement sheriffs with education can get your advanced certificate. And just like Rex Bone said, Supervisor Bone said, there's over forty thousand law enforcement, current law enforcement officers that could run for sheriffs in all fifty-eight counties. So that's my two cents, I appreciate you bringing this up and for us to have a discussion about it.
Sheriff, I have a question and I'm not sure, I didn't see any of their hands from the board yet, but I actually have a lot of questions because you're right, when we look at the entire state for the counties, if another one size does not fit all and understand some of the concepts behind it. And it also sounds like this really hasn't got out of the committee yet, I don't think. I mean, I think there's still a lot of discussion. And so a couple of the questions I have is with the different things in the post-certification, you know, you just alluded to, it sounds like there's a lot, you know, the emails that I saw, many of them, you know, had specific concerns about, you know, they'd rather have someone, you know, with a background in mental health or in public health or, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff. But I'm suspecting that there's something already in your training, hopefully that covers certain items such as that, and I'd like to find out what. And if not, do you see perhaps Post be willing to add something that was more, a little more training on some of the, those types of situations that it might be good to have more knowledge in mental health or crisis intervention and stuff?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, as, as, you know, a post-advanced certificate again, I mean, it takes nine years of just someone who just has an A degree, but if someone has, like I said, a master's degree, you know, who has upper level, it could take four years. So there's sheriffs that have master's degrees, bachelor's degrees, A degrees and no degrees at all, okay? So it's up and down the state. Post requires twenty-four hours of training every two years, twenty-four hours of training. And that's just the minimum training, we oftentimes go above and beyond that. Every time you, either a field training officer, training or supervisory management training, every one of those trainings have some component in it regarding mental health, regarding, you know, evaluation, crisis intervention, those kind of things, it's a very, very important part. And so, you know, right now too, the sheriff's office, you know, we're focusing on de-escalation and mental health based upon our current state and what is required by us from different legislation that has just passed in the last year. So we have focused on that and we're going to continue focusing on that. And, you know, a good sheriff is a sheriff that's well-rounded, okay? And we're talking about our sheriff's deputies too, right? They have all sorts of exposure to how to deal with someone in mental health crisis, first aid, dealing with, you know, defensive tactics, domestic violence, child abuse. I mean, we run, you know, we have to, we have to be really knowledgeable in a lot of different aspects of the job. So it's something, learning never ends, you know, when you are a deputy or when you're a law enforcement officer. And so we're always looking to advance our knowledge.
Supervisor, I'll read these, and second Supervisor Bone, I just wanted to follow up, when you talked about the masters for the other ones. That can, that's not necessarily just in political, I mean, in police science, those masters can be in anything, can't they? So somebody who has a real strong public health background and for some reason they wanted to go through the training, then there is a path for that. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you, that was important for me to find out. Supervisor Bone?
I wanted to take, we talked about being nimble on our feet, I want to thank the sheriff publicly for taking the old eight-seventy shotguns and turning them into non-lethal and creating a position where our deputies can make a good, solid decision at a safe distance without putting themselves in harm's way and de-escalation. And these things happen all the time, you do these things on a weekly, monthly basis and training stuff comes out constantly, but I thought that was a recognition that I would like to make to you, knowing full well, somebody that is a sheriff would understand that a beanbag may work in ninety percent of the cases, not all the time, but then take that fatality out of it and go to a non-lethal situation and do it by using the equipment on hand that we already had and repurposing it. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions from the supervisors before we go to public comment? And if you are wanting to make public comment, please do press star nine, like right now, so I know that you're going to be commenting. So I had, I saw Sheriff Hansel say raise his hand and Supervisor Madron?
I just want to add one more thing, and that is, there's also a really good possibility that this year we could pass some legislation on that, that has to do with decertification. So when a law enforcement officer does something, breaks a law, you know, we could decertify them as law enforcement officers, okay? And so that means we take their post-basic certificate away, their academy certificate away, as well as their advanced certificate away. So Post says that they cannot be a peace officer in the state of California, those certificates will be removed. There's nothing in this law that states that someone who is decertified can't run for sheriff. And so you could have essentially someone who couldn't be a peace officer run for sheriff. And we could say, oh, that would never happen in our county. Absolutely, I don't think our county is, it would be, you know, that way, but maybe some other place they would. Maybe, maybe some other smaller county, you know, could have someone who has been decertified in law enforcement be a sheriff. And this legislature would allow that to happen.
Supervisor Wilson, Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, I very much appreciate the discussion and I want to thank Supervisor Bushnell and Bone for bringing this forward and for Sheriff Hansel being here today to, you know, present his point of view and I appreciate all of that. I also saw the nice media event on the news last night, Sheriff Hansel, and kudos for you, working with the media to get that information out there about the steps you're taking to train officers and to add, as Supervisor Bone said, another tool in your toolbox for de-escalation with the shotgun, beanbag approach. And I totally appreciate all those steps, you know, the baton, you're right up close. See, I watched, I learned last night. So the baton, you're up close, the mace, you can be back a little further, the taser even further back, and the beanbag even further back. And I know we all want to make sure that our deputies and personnel stay safe, absolutely. And I very much appreciate what you just mentioned about the certification process. You and I have both had a lot of conversations about possible deputies that may be acting out of control or escalating situations rather than de-escalating. And I know we work really hard to try and deal with those things, but I think that decertification process would be a wonderful tool to add to that toolbox because as we know with the unions and with state law, right now it's hard, it's kind of hard to deal with somebody that is a bit out of control or whatever. And again, I just want to say that the vast majority of deputies here and everywhere are not out of control. They're good people, they care a lot about our community and they put themselves in harm's way every day. And as we all know, it's getting more dangerous out there on the streets unfortunately right now. So I very much value having you and the deputies out there helping us in the community. The very first step though in de-escalation is to try and verbally talk the person down if they're having a drug-induced or a mental episode of some kind, before we even use the baton, the taser, the mace or the shotgun, the first step is verbally trying to talk the individual down. And, you know, I absolutely think that if we could find it in our budget somehow to fund more street outreach workers to ride along with the deputies, to kind of add that extra tool in the toolbox where they are trained entirely to do those things, your folks are trained, get some training, but it's not necessarily their expertise to try and talk somebody down, although there are many that are very good at it. I've met many over the years that are incredible at that. So no disparaging there whatsoever, just trying to recognize that there are lots of skills and efforts that can be put to this de-escalation approach. I'm actually not that worried personally that our community would somehow elect an eighteen-year-old with no training or somebody that's been decertified or whatever. I actually think our community is pretty darn smart in that regard in terms of being able to really try and pick the best candidate. So I actually don't have a problem with the law personally myself, I think variety and competition is a good thing. I recognize the potential problems that were mentioned, but I actually think our community is just much smarter than that and more engaged. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think what we're all really trying to do is keep everybody safe, including our officers, make sure we have a capable leadership, which is important, but also keep the community safe from officers that might escalate a situation unnecessarily. So, I mean, again, I appreciate the discussion. So thank you very much, supervisors, for bringing this forward and Sheriff for being here today.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron and, yes, Supervisor Bone?
And I have to, because I've heard this a few times now, how many cases, and I think we talked about this, Sheriff Hansel, do your sheriffs run into, with your calls being rural and things, not necessarily in downtown Eureka, how many cases would a social worker riding along be put into play and not in harm's way in the calls that we have? Because I don't know how many mental health issue, drug-induced issues, calls we have. So do you have a number on that?
Yeah, well, I don't have the specific numbers, but, you know, anecdotally, we have, you know, some of these calls are kind of like medical calls as well, right? And so when someone is out of control or those kind of things or having a medical episode or, you know, mentally breaking down, sometimes medical is called. And medical will not go and see that patient until we are there on scene, you know, to protect the scene and to make sure that things are safe. And social workers oftentimes will do the same thing. And so what we want to do is definitely have mobile outreach with social workers for those times when someone's having a mental health crisis that there's no danger, they're not threatening, you know, with weapons, they're not threatening to harm themselves, but they would love to be able to, they're having a mental health crisis and they would love to speak with them, with someone. So we do have those calls from time to time when someone says, I would like to be transported SB because I feel like, you know, I'm going to hurt myself eventually, I'm not going to do it right now or I'm feeling this way. And so we're the first responders for those things. And at that point in time, we could send social workers to those kind of calls, which would definitely help. We could send social workers to calls that, you know, on domestic violence calls. And, you know, after everything is diffused, to be able to have a social worker, someone come in and talk to the kids and the families, you know, after the fact. I mean, that's something that's definitely worthwhile. So there's definitely an application for it, there are sheriff's offices that are working with social services all over the state. We started this conversation with Director Beck and so we hope to have some avenue for funding and a project to bring forward in this next year to this board and we'll be able to present to you what we believe is a good plan for mobile outreach with social workers and deputies working together in a joint response. So this next year, I believe you will get that and we will make that presentation to you. We just got to get through this budget time right now and so we can, you know, put forward some kind of a budget proposal for you guys.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think we're still waiting to have the year closed.
Yes.
Not behind us. I just wanted to ask your opinion, Sheriff. You know, there's, I hear what Supervisor Madron is saying because I can understand where he's coming from, that there are concerns in some counties, but I think it is really hard on the smaller counties. I know it's like CSAC has not taken a position yet because they represent fifty-eight counties and there's obviously not an agreement in the group on how this could work, especially in the smallest of counties. Do you see this potentially being one of those types of legislation where, you know, there'll often be legislation where it's specific to a couple of counties or, you know, certain counties? Are you, is the group hearing any conversation of maybe it morphing into that direction? Because it does seem to me that a one-size-fits-all is not the best. I understand there is ways now to, you know, get people that have the types of qualifications and I, you know, I'm comfortable with a lot of what you said. And I think we are pretty good here, but the smallest of small, it's just tough and I'd like, I'd see this as more appropriate in just specific.
Yes, yes. So I hear what you're saying, yes. And so that has been an ongoing discussion as far as why? Why is this coming forward? And there's always, people mention two counties in California that are an issue, they believe. And it's not Humboldt counties, and these are large counties. And so, you know, that's the issue, is like, why are we making a law that only, at this present time, we're dealing with two sheriffs that, you know, are what they believe are an issue for the legislature? So personally, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think they're going to change anything right now, I don't think that they are going to modify this right now. And so this is going to committee right now with Senator McGuire as the chair. And so, you know, that's where we stand right now.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to ask Sheriff Hansel, so from my understanding, a lot of the bigger towns that are incorporated, they have their own chief of police, right? With different, and so the sheriffs, a lot of the county sheriffs are more rural and more rurally led, which is a difference. You also, Eureka, Arcata, Fortuna, right now, have their police chief, which is a different group of selection, is that correct or not correct?
Yes, so the chiefs are, you know, appointed by their city councils and managed by the city manager. And that's how chiefs work within municipalities in California. And so, and the sheriff obviously runs the unincorporated areas and works with the chiefs and also runs the jail, coroner's office and courts, so.
Right. Some of the bigger metropolis-type areas have chief of police, correct? And sheriffs in the more unincorporated areas?
Yes, and also there's sheriff's office that have contract cities, you know, throughout the state, just like we have Trinidad and Blue Lake here, you know, within our county. So the sheriff is the chief of Blue Lake and Trinidad as well, so, but yeah.
Okay. I had gotten, the reason I'm asking is I had gotten several emails and they were, brought up issues that actually had nothing to do with our sheriff's department, they had to do with Eureka and Arcata area. And I think it's really important that we recognize the difference in counties and especially in the more rural counties and that was the reason for my question.
Right.
All right, well, we do have one hand up for public comment. And so we will head over there now and again, if you are listening, this is the time to press star nine if you want to make comments. So, hand up right now is whoever ends on the last four digits of nine, seven, one, six. And press star six to unmute and welcome. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Carpani Burns and I live in humbleness and great gratitude on stolen, unceded ancestral Wiat land. This board, that this board is opposing- This board, that this board is opposing SB two seventy-one affirms its deliberate indifference and disrespect for the people of Humboldt County. To declare that the support for SB two seventy-one will jeopardize public safety is misguided speculation at best. What safety? Eureka is ranked ninth of the most dangerous cities in California, according to code. Already in 2021, Humboldt has logged in over seventy crimes overall, including four murders and fourteen combined assaults and attempted murders. Police don't keep us safe, as we know from friends in our Black, Brown, Indigenous, LGBTQ, and poor communities. The issue here is not one of safety. The issue is racism, classism, and power. The present process for the elected position of sheriff in California is closed to the broad expanse of qualified talent available to better serve the people. The process exists not to protect the people, but to sustain the elite power structure and status quo, running counter to the changes necessary for healthy, safe communities. We reject business as usual. We demand creativity, care, humanity, justice, and equity on the terms of the people. SB two seventy-one is a good step forward. We accept that each step will be imperfect, but it will be a step. To have our elected representatives dig in and resist the inevitable, like petulant children, having their lollipops taken away, is again revealing and inspiring to continue the fight for people over power. I strongly urge the board to reconsider its misleading opposition letter to Senator Mike McGuire, and its opposition to SB two seventy-one, and to the people's call for change. I want to say thank you also for the conversation. This is difficult work, and I'm happy to stay involved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carpani. We have no more hands up, so we will return to the board. Supervisor Wilson and Bone?
Thank you, Chair Bass. So, I would say my position on this is fairly nuanced relative to this, and part of it is, hold on, I gotta close the door, hold on.
This time's up.
There are a lot of noise in the background there. So, for one, this, I'm not sure this is ripe yet necessarily. I know this is going, there's negotiations still happening around this particular bill. And so, for me, I have a hard time even voting on this today without really knowing what the, where this is gonna go. And I know that there's discussions, because I did talk to Senator Weiner's office about this, and I, and just for note, for, you know, Supervisor Bone, I want to say, like, we can't be calling out where people are from as a negative, like, you know, the senator from San Francisco. I mean, I'm just saying, like, we gotta, I don't know what was meant by that, but, and maybe there was nothing intended, and I probably think that there probably wasn't, but we just have to be careful of that.
Let's bring it up.
Yeah, that, so, but I want to say that, and maybe we could use different terms like urban or something, I'm just saying, it's just a little bit, it's a little too specific. But nonetheless, I want to say that this, like I said, I don't really see this as the solution, the bill currently, in its current language, as being the best solution. One caller, the caller mentioned as a step forward. I do believe there does need to be an expansion of qualifications. I don't think that the expansion should be to everybody. And so, and if you look at the code that's referenced, you'll see, you know, there is a spectrum of qualifications for the district attorney, for superintendent, for judges, for treasurers, for auditor controllers. It's not so specific. I do feel like it is a bit narrow. I don't think that, in the current context, what we see right now serves our community the best, or all communities the best. I think it can be improved upon. I think that this bill makes an attempt at improving on that, although I think that maybe it's not quite there yet, and I know there's negotiations around that. So, I would say that, you know, there's one perspective that opening this up, you know, expands the opportunity for democracy, and I see that. And I also understand where, you know, a working sheriff is really a very functional thing in small communities, that, I understand that. But again, you know, maybe that's something that's left to the populace to decide whether that's something that is a requirement or not. So, there has been discussions about adding, again, to the options of requirements, such as degrees in law, degree in public administration, degree in criminal law, those sorts of things. And so, I, from my perspective, as this stands now, I just don't see it as ripe, and I have not, in my entire time, I think, on this board abstained from a vote. But if this moves to a vote today, that's probably where I'm gonna be, just because I really want to see what comes out, the, you know, the sausage-making that occurs, that's incurring even today. I know that there are negotiations and discussions between Senator Weiner's office and Senator McGuire and others about the language, and how we can try and come to a place that serves the most people. So, that's where I stand on this today. And I appreciate all of the things that were said by all of the supervisors, because, again, this isn't, I think we all have the same goal in the end, which is a safer, more prosperous, more fair community that we live in. I just, and I think what we're differing on and parsing on is the strategy to get to that place. And so, and I, and I know I've had many conversations with Billy on these issues, and I, and for the most part, ninety percent of the time, we come together on most issues, and even the things we don't, you know, we're respectful in our disagreements on those things. So, so that's where I stand in this current space, and I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you. Before I go to Supervisor Bone and then Bushnell, I wanted to say, I agree that it's not, I feel it's not ripe, but I'd like also into the concept of oppose unless amended. Maybe that could be part of the discussion, because we know if not right now, and, so, I don't want to say I can support it right now, but I don't want to say I'm outright, you know, never want to hear anymore about it. So, somewhere after these, Supervisor Bone and Bushnell talk, and I would like to hear more from Sheriff Hansel. So, Rex, I think you were first.
I don't know. The reason I mentioned San Francisco is because they're the anomaly in the state of California. I mean, they are a city and a county, and their sheriff and police chief have to work side by side, so he has limited, they have limited capabilities, the sheriff there. He actually just runs the jail. I think the sheriff is, I mean, the police, because, and I think they have nine supervisors. And, so, I mean, they are an extreme anomaly, so that's why I mentioned it. It is, no, I love San Francisco, I'm not gonna go on and on about that, but I don't know what you were trying to make of it, but I appreciate that.
Through the chair.
I do appreciate the expansion of qualifications. SB two seventy-one does not give an expansion of qualifications, it takes qualifications away, just like all the others. And I made quite a few phone calls on this, and had talked with McGuire and the things on this. And to abstain from something that needs to be fixed, this does not work the way it is. So, if you get a letter of opposition, they're gonna know, maybe I should bring this back and fix it. I don't want to say, hey, if you fix it, I'm gonna vote for it, because I don't know how they're gonna fix it. They can bring it back if they want, so I will be, and so, I agree with your expansion of qualifications, but, like I said, and so, I mean, we can, we can try to make everybody happy, and I'm not worried about that. I'm gonna try to do the right thing and make a motion to send a letter of opposition to Senate Bill two seventy-one. That's my motion.
So, second?
I'm in a second, but I want to have some discussion also.
Okay, because I have something I wanted to add to that, but I know Supervisor Wilson had, wanted to go say something through the chair regarding Supervisor Bone's comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Supervisor Bone for the clarification. Oftentimes, as we know, certain places are used as cultural touchstones with relationship to culture war arguments, and so, we just have to be careful of that, and I appreciate, I really do appreciate the clarification, and I do not, or I totally understand and know your appreciation for San Francisco as a city in place, because I know you spend time there and enjoy it, so, thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify. And I just, on the issue itself, if there is, you know, if we want to discuss an amendment that includes, you know, if amended, or, you know, then, or if not amended, I guess, is the way the language would be, we could do that. I don't know how much time we want to spend parsing that together, or whether we want to just denote the intent of that and authorize the chair to make those changes. Well, I don't know how we want to do that, because we, because when we get into, like, trying to wordsmith at this level, it can be a little bit crazy-making.
This is what I would recommend, if I can throw this in there, and I swear I want the sheriff to respond, because I'm uncomfortable taking a complete oppose. If we did an oppose unless amended, then, when amendments are made, we would still get to have that conversation, wouldn't we? I mean, that would be my hope, that if we say oppose unless amended, then we would be able to look at, what is, I'm looking just at the sheriff to see, what would you, what would you suggest that we could do so that we could still be nimble in case they amend, what they amend is not what is going to work for us either? What is your suggestion? Or would it be best to just bring this back in a, you know, more conversations had? I just, I'm just curious from the sheriff's perspective. And then we'll go to Supervisor.
Okay. You know, it's my perspective that this is gonna be on, this is gonna be on the radar, and, so, if this passes the committee and goes to the floor, you know, we will have further discussions on this, and it could be amended, and so, I will, I plan on having discussions with all of you, and if you want to bring it to the board level to have a board discussion, be more than happy to sit here and kind of debate the issues with everyone. That's not a problem. So, this is gonna be there, and I think, you know, and this is gonna be an ongoing conversation that we're gonna have, because, you know, there's gonna be decertification things coming up, there's also gonna be raising the requirements to be a law enforcement officer, you know, so this is gonna be an ongoing discussion with the board and myself, you know, over the next, you know, probably next year or so, as we've talked about, you know, police reform and also other things, you know, that law enforcement is gonna do here in California to kind of lead the way. So, so that's something that I don't think you're gonna have to worry about. We will have ongoing discussion here, probably over the next year about it.
So, if we asked you to come back in a couple of months with an update, perhaps this conversation, would you just as fine to have then, from your perspective?
I can have the conversation whenever you want, absolutely, not a problem.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell? Was it you? Yeah, sorry. And then Rex, I can't remember if you had your hand up.
Thank you. Through the chair, so I was gonna ask, with my second, what I wanted to say was that if we do amend the letter, or right, just to recognize that we are concerned with this bill going forward, would that be, and it could be with just the wording amend, would the board feel more okay with that? I think for me, my idea is that going forward with this legislation as it stands isn't something I want for our county, but recognizing that it's fluid right now and wanting to get, I personally would like our feelings, why I was part of this, was saying nothing right now and just letting it work its way out, is not stating our concerns, you know, what we feel, or me specifically. So, I am okay with amending the motion, if Rex is okay to say amend or consider. And that's why I was gonna ask Sheriff Hansel what he thinks about that.
I'm okay with that. I think they, they need to hear it, they need to hear it from small counties, and if we stay silent, you know, I've sent a letter, I know that there's, the law enforcement chiefs of Humboldt have sent a letter, several people have sent letters, also California District Attorneys Association, Cal chiefs, California state sheriffs have all sent letters and made phone calls and to talk about why this bill is a bad bill. So, whatever we can do to get the discussion going, to say as-is, the bill's not, doesn't work for small rural counties.
I will amend it to letter of opposition with the bill as-is to smaller counties. I'll go to that. I mean, it's just, I really believe that, I hope we've elected a state senator that gets a letter in opposition to a bill, probably gets in his head going, "I guess they don't like this one, I better rewrite it." I hope he's got enough knowledge to figure that out and enough follow-through that he's gonna, I hope we're electing people to the, in other places, even my beloved San Francisco. I hope that they're electing people that know, well, they don't like this version, maybe I'll change the version. I don't think it's our job to wordsmith somebody else's bill. So, I would, I would just say, this does not, as written, as written, we oppose. I mean, that's the same thing. I'm just saying, if he wants to amend it, that's fine, I'm not gonna tell him to amend it, but I will add, as written, we oppose.
Supervisor Wilson, then I have a question for the chair.
I can tell you that the conversation we're having today, whether we send a letter or don't send a letter, the senator's office is going to hear about it, and they're already monitoring this issue. So, I just want, I mean, to be clear, like, I understand the symbolism and the, you know, and the functionality of sending these things, but I, again, I just don't think it's ripe, and I think it confuses things until this, like I said today, they have very serious negotiations about it in this moment, and trust me, those of us who are interested in this will be making some phone calls after this meeting, whether or not, I mean, I assume, and maybe probably sending some emails, I will be, because I think it is an important issue. So, with that, I'm still not comfortable sending a letter in the way that it's being proposed moment, because it doesn't enumerate the intent of our concern, it only looks at one aspect of that, and I'm saying, we have not wordsmithed this to a place where it enumerates or talks about, you know, why we would seek an expansion of requirements versus an elimination of requirements, and, which quite, it's kind of a funny term, because we're saying elimination of requirements, which really expands the requirements to everything, I guess, you know, it's like, it can be anything. So, with that, I still am not comfortable moving forward with a letter today, but I do think this is an important issue. I don't think, as it's probably currently written, it's probably gonna, it's just not gonna be what it is, I don't even think tomorrow. So, I'm having a hard time, I don't want to sign something or move, for me, or put my name on something until I know something out the other end. Thanks.
I just have a comment, I don't know if there's interest in doing this, because send something to the standpoint of, you know, we currently do not support this as written, and we look forward to further conversations. I don't know, you know, because, I mean, I think it makes sense to say, we're not exactly, this isn't right, this isn't where it should be, there's a lot of stuff that's not right with it, but I do think, and I'm sure that people are monitoring, but whether they're watching or hearing what's happened in our meeting, I don't have as much confidence of that as in at least getting something in their hands. It doesn't have to say, it doesn't have to come across as we just, we're not gonna work with you on this, but it's like, we have serious concerns about this as it is currently written, and, so I don't know, that's too squishy, so, anyway, I saw Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up, and then Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you. Through the chair, so I, my understanding with Rex's amendment to the motion is that is what we would be saying, that as written, we currently have concerns. Am I correct or not, Rex?
As a rural county, we have concerns.
Yes.
I mean, and if everybody wants to add something that makes them feel better, I guess they can, but I'm just saying, I think that gets it to the point, and knowing that the six to eight thousand bills- gets it to the point. And knowing that the six to eight thousand bills that they're proposing and they're watching us, I know they're aware, Mike, I, I made the same phone calls you didn't. And I'm going to be making the same calls, but I, I don't know if anybody listened or is aware. When the sheriff talked about the agencies that are opposed to this, who have professional politicians or lobbyists and everything else, DA, sheriffs, police, local chiefs association, a lot of people see a lot of holes in this that don't support it as written. Now, the DA's is a state agency, the Sheriff's Association is state, but I mean, take the sheriffs out of it, the DA is, so there are things wrong with it. They know that. So I'm just saying, if you want, my motion will state, we are opposed to this as written. Now that says, okay, if we change the way we've written it, we'll like it. They have a better opportunity because we don't like it. So that's the way I'll leave it. I feel comfortable with that. And I cannot believe that we will be the, the only anomaly, the only county in the state that comes up with this letter.
So thank you, Rex. And with that, that was my question. I'm not okay with them just knowing, just watching and hoping it gets their attention. I like the amendment of as written, we have good, good concerns. And so that would be my second.
Supervisor Wilson.
So just to clarify, does that mean the word opposition in the first sentence is replaced with the word concern? Is that what, is that how this is?
That's how, that's how I took it, Supervisor Wilson. And that's how I would like it worded. I think that's what Rex said.
So then, and just through the chair, does that mean this is a letter of concern and not a letter of?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to still be opposed. And the reason is we're concerned the way it's written. We're opposed, we're opposed to it as written because of the concerns of a rural county.
So the opposition is with the way it's written with concerns with the way it's.
Opposed to it. I mean, I, unless you're trying to make it softer like we're trying to be feely touchy, but I'm not trying to be feely touchy. I'm trying to get our point across.
No.
And I don't want to compromise anybody's position with any other office holders or anything else, but and just, it, it does not bode well for Humboldt County. And that's first, first and foremost, what we got to do. And the rural counties are really kind of opposed to this.
So Ryan, can you, can, is Ryan there?
I hope so.
Ryan, what do you think it says? Can you read it?
No. There, you amended it a couple of different times. I mean, I'm not sure if we're sending the letter of opposition or if we're just taking a motion of opposite, to oppose it.
So my understanding is that we're, the motion is to send a letter of opposition with as, as it is written right now, that we have, our county has concerns.
Okay, so. What I have written current with Supervisor Bones motion was to send a letter of opposition for Senate Bill two seventy-one. And then there was some additional language as added.
Ryan, try this. Letter of opposition as written due to concerns of the effect on rural counties. And if.
Okay, we'll start with that. That Supervisor Bushnell. Supervisor Wilson.
So I'm going to offer some language here. It doesn't necessarily deal with my concerns, but it might deal with yours, Sheriff Bass, which is in the first sentence of the letter, it would say, on behalf of Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, I am Ryan and express our respectful concern with regards to Senate Bill two seven one. Because as written, it would potentially affect and the services. And then to add a sentence before the last sentence, which would be without amendments, with, you know, without amendments, Humboldt County opposes Senate two seven one. So that basically it has both of those things. It talks about the concerns, although it doesn't enumerate. My issue, but then it also, it says it has the without amendments part to it. So it's a fairly simple way to get that message across, which is there's concerns and that, you know, that we're open to amendments.
And I, I would just say it might be helpful to even add something there. We're looking forward to continued conversations or something. So, so it's like, and I would like the sheriff to feel comfortable, I mean, maybe two months from now, whatever you think is a good timeframe to actually make sure we have, nice to come back to us or a continued discussion. So we doesn't just get dropped and lost in the atmosphere.
We have a motion and a second on the table and that's completely different. So are we?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm pretty well with my motion because as written, I'm opposed to it. And I am, you know, I'm, I'm willing to relook at it when he rewrites it. And I think he's going to, I, I don't know. I, 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 I guess we're trying to spoon feed it. So we're not really opposed to it. We just think you guys need to fine tune it. And I, I think, I think it's a bigger idea than that. So.
I think with the, with it being so new, I don't disagree with Supervisor Wilson to some point. And Virginia, what was your, I'm sorry, Chair Bass, what was your second part you said?
No, I just, I was, I think it was something like, we, we look forward to continuing conversations or just something to state that, you know, we're not saying we don't ever want to even think about this. We're saying, I think we're all interested in, in having a further conversation is not right the way it is now. I think Supervisor Wilson is looking for a way to soften it up a little bit, which, you know, one way or the other, they're going to get it however we send it and they're going to go, okay, these guys don't really like it. That's, and we'll be put in a, we'll, we'll be put in a category and, you know, they'll try to figure it out and it'll get the, that's all.
The intent is to let them know from our board that, that we aren't currently liking the way it's going so that we can have recognition with this legislative bill. And I, I'm not, I'm okay with softening it a little bit so that they recognize that. And, and Sheriff Hansel, you think it, it's going to come back, right? It'll be something we continually talk about.
Absolutely. This will be in my, on my radar throughout the, the time that it's still an active bill. And as long as it remains active, I will be, you know, talking to you all and our community about why this is a legislation that shouldn't move forward. So, so yeah, an opposition letter, yeah, was, is, is, is good. How it's written.
Okay, so Rex.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with, we're opposed as written due to the effects it can cause rural counties. And, and so what they're going to do is hopefully, again, that we have elected positions with staff that's going to go, well, I really didn't think about smaller counties in this because I'm elected by my, because you, I'm sure this is centrist to begin with. That's first and foremost. And then he had other people sign on. I tried to look at everybody signed on. So I'm, I'm happy with sending it. We get our point. The Sheriff's Association, they're going to go to them and everything and say, hey, we are, you know, there is opposition to this way. It's written, a lot of it is coming from rural counties. How can we adjust that? So maybe it's counties of over two hundred and fifty thousand people can have whoever they want, have a business major or a, a social worker as, as their sheriff. The smaller counties will have people that can actually, in a time of need, be ready to act upon it. I don't know how it's going to go. So.
I understand that. I just would like our board as a whole to, I think it's more effective if our board as a whole, and if we change the word opposition to concerned, it's the same meaning. And it gets their attention. And I, I know you're going to shake your head.
I know, trust me.
But I think, I don't know, Supervisor Madron and Wilson, would you be, feel more comfortable with it being changed to oppose to concerned as written? Shake your head, Rex.
I just want to say, I wanted to throw, and Supervisor Wilson's language I thought made sense. So that, that to me makes more sense and just as straight up, you know, we're done, we're opposing it. So is that one, the one you were talking about Supervisor Bushnell? I need to send that type of a letter.
I think the simple change from opposition to concerned as written is appropriate, given that the the board, all of the board members today have recognized that there are some concerns with it. And I, I, I guess I would refer to Sheriff Hansel if he thinks for a first letter, if that would be effective enough to rec, for them to recognize that we are concerned with the way it's written.
Through the chair. Is that okay? All right. So I mean, I, I honestly think that an opposition letter as written is, it sends the strongest message. And, you know, it, it just puts them on notice that, you know, how it's written, they need to change things up if they really want to really be the voice of rural Northern California. And so that's where I think, you know, we need to take a stance and, and to look at, you know, advocating for what's best for our rural, rural communities up here.
So now I'm really confused on what.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go forward with my second as, as the maker stated it.
Oh, through the chair, can, or can you clarify what you just said?
That I was wondering. Yeah.
Ryan, can you read the motion, please?
Okay. So I think this is my current understanding is to send a letter of opposition as the bill is currently written due to concerns of effects on rural counties.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah. And not that I belabor this, but I think to just clarify what I think, and Rex, maybe you can help me with this. To clarify what Rex is saying is basically an amendment to the first sentence. Again, I just want, so we can clarify and move forward, that on behalf of Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, I'm writing to express our respectful opposition to Senate Bill two seven one as written because it would put, just basically putting that in, that's, that's what, that's what Supervisor Bones asking for is just those two words in that first sentence to clarify. Is that what I understand Supervisor Bone?
We live with that Supervisor.
The motion maker.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Well, which is fine. I just wanted to make sure that was the clarification and I appreciate that clarification.
Okay. So we will add as written after Senate Bill two seventy-one in the letter.
Yeah. And I would, and I want to address, if I may, through the chair, Supervisor Bushnell's, you know, desire to have everybody on board for this. I don't think that's going to happen today, but that's okay. I mean, it happens like that sometimes and it is what we do strive for. And, and sometimes it's not, it's just not what we get, but I do appreciate that. And so as written, I, I, again, I just, I just don't think this is right from my perspective. And I will, this again will be, I think, my first abstention in, in all my time on the board, which is how, you know, quite seriously I take that in terms of like, I just don't use them very often and nor should they be. Thank you.
Yeah. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I really appreciate this discussion today. I think it's a very important topic. And I think everybody's been very respectful to each other. You know, we're going to differ on things sometimes. And I just want to say that the right thing to do is what each of us believes is the right thing to do. There is no right thing to do, you know? And when we make a statement like that, it, it suggests that others that don't do that are doing the wrong thing. And that's just not the way that is. Whatever each of us believe is the right thing to do is the right thing to do. And that's okay. It's okay for us to differ. I mean, that's why we live in a democracy, you know, and as long as we're being respectful to each other, and I think we basically have been here today. I think that's important and I do appreciate the discussion.
All right.
So we're not on the right thing?
Supervisor Bone, you're not up right now. Supervisor Bushnell and then Wilson.
Thank you. Through the chair. I just wanted to, to say to Supervisor Madron that I, I recognize that and understand it, but also what I hear in this conversation is that we all somewhat have concerns about this bill. So I was trying to just get to, you know, something because if you both had said, you know, no, I, I, we, we support this, then that would have been a different statement, but that is not what you said. And I do also like the conversation and, and it helps me a lot with clarity. And I just really want to recognize that, yes, we won't always agree, but there are portions of this bill, as we have all stated today, that we don't like. And so I think having the, having the discussion go forward or a letter go forward was my intent that, hey, we're not okay, any of us with current language. And I do appreciate though, both of your discussions.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. I appreciate that. I actually did state in my first comments earlier on that I do support the bill. I don't have a problem with it. And that's, I'll say it again, I primarily have tremendous faith in our electorate, in our, our, our community, that they're going to do the right thing. Whoever runs for office, they're going to look at their qualifications. They're going to look at what they believe the needs are for the position. And they're going to make the, you know, the decision based on what they believe is the right thing to do. So I actually did state that I do support the bill because I have tremendous faith in our community to do the right thing, even if we open it up. That isn't to say I don't appreciate people that have training and qualifications to be a law enforcement person or all that. I didn't make any disparaging remarks in that regard. I just think that things are changing in our communities in a dramatic way. When I go to McKinnonville Municipal Advisory Committee meetings and we get our monthly updates, it's obvious to me that, you know, over thirty percent, sometimes as high as fifty percent of the call volume is actually dealing with people on the street. And I, I really very much believe that having more outreach workers to work with the deputies is a great way to go. And, you know, is somebody that has law enforcement training at the helm, the best way to do that? Or are there other qualifications that might help? I don't know, but I'm very open to trying to see how we can improve things. I appreciate what Sheriff Hansel is doing. Like I said earlier, the decertification and other kinds of things like that, that de-escalation training, those are really fantastic efforts and I applaud you for that. So it's in no way disparaging of our current sheriff or other law enforcement people. It just, I actually support it. And so that's really been my problem here in this discussion is that I'm not opposed to the bill as it's written. So I'll just make that very clear, but it's not to be disparaging of anybody. Okay? So.
And thank you Supervisor Madron. And I just, from hearing your comments, I have to remind myself, it's not just our county. You know, we may be fine because, you know, we have a sheriff that we work well with. There's other counties that may not be in that same position. So I mean, and so on the, and so hopefully this will be worked on and whatever does come back as that laddied to the, you know, small counties or something. But I think at this point, it's been a very interesting conversation and I know that the sheriff will bring it back. I, you know, whether we want to stay, bring it back in a month or bring it back when you think there's been enough change to it. I just, I know we will have this conversation again and it'll be important to let the community know that. And we should just take a clip of this conversation and send it with the letter so they can listen to our concerns instead of try to figure it out. So with that, I, unless anyone has an objection, I'll ask Ryan to do a roll call vote and to please read it one more time.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Chair, because they're, they're, and I, I need to make sure the, the maker of the motion and the seconder are okay with adding that verbiage to their letter. So it'd be first paragraph after Senate Bill two seventy-one. So agreed, on behalf of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, I'm writing to express our respectful opposition to Senate Bill two seventy-one as written. So that Supervisor Wilson had thought you intended Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell. So I'm just, we are going to add as written to your letter. So we are adding language to your letter.
That's, that's what we're opposed to as the way it's written, but if we have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want everyone to be on the same page.
Thank you, Ryan. I just, yeah.
You're welcome. So, so I think that the, what I have for the motion is to send a letter of opposition as the bill is currently written due to concerns of effects on rural counties and add as written to the after Senate Bill two seventy-one.
Okay. Let's do. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
And as a side note, I have full respect for the electorate. I've gone through that a long time. This has nothing to do with the electorate. What it does do in our position is with whatever we do and vote on, it's our job to give the electorate and the people a good choice to choose from and then how they do that. So I just want to make sure we don't throw everything out there. We have good choices and trained people that are ready to take on the position. That, that was all I, but I love our electorate. So I just wanna make sure we don't throw everything out there. We have good choices and trained people that are ready to take on the position. That, that was all, but I love our electorate. I mean, to say if you vote for this, you hate the electorate, or you're against the electorate is ridiculous.
All right, Ryan?
Thank you Chair. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Abstain.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
So it is going to pass 3-1 with Supervisor Wilson abstaining.
All right, well, thank you for all the conversation, and we'll let the sheriff go along probably with his day. He's been with us a long time this morning. Thank you. All right, so the next item is a departmental item, and it comes to us from Public Works, and it's regarding the introduction of an ordinance, and because the ordinance is spelled out very clearly on the agenda, we do not have to ask County Council to introduce the ordinance. Consider it introduced. And I will turn this over to Bob Frankel. Welcome.
Good morning. Hopefully this item will go a little bit quicker than last item. The proposed ordinance is a cleanup ordinance that affects three ordinances. In the site visibility ordinance, the proposed ordinance corrects a scribbler's error in how the public hearing is incorporated into the abatement process. In the subdivision ordinance, the proposed ordinance removes embedded fees from the county code and instead refers to the fee schedule for the current fee. And in the third ordinance, the encroachment permit ordinance, the proposed ordinance removes embedded fees from the county code and refers back to the fee schedule as well. It aligns penalties with the encroachment permit ordinance with state law. It aligns the ordinance with the resolution for the correction of damaged or defective sidewalks, and it also aligns the abatement process with the county code in code enforcement ordinance. The department recommends that your board consider public testimony and adopt staff recommendations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Any, any members from the board have questions or comments for Bob? Supervisor Bone?
So Bob, let me get this. So instead of a set fee, we're gonna have somebody come in that, and this is at a time where we're begging people to build housing because we don't have any housing. So if somebody comes in and says, hey, I have fourteen acres up somewhere in McKinneyville, Cotten, whatever. What are my chances of building on it? So if somebody's working on it, they can keep going back and working on it and building them appropriately, or can we give them a quick synopsis without going into them spending money? Yeah, your chances are good, bad, or ugly. I mean, we get people all the time asking, and talking with the people that are doing more than one house at a time, basically subdivisions, small subdivisions, the cost of doing the infrastructure, materials, and the delay. Right now, they'd all love to be building ten houses cuz they sell them, but in two years, by the time we get through there, we don't have an expediated process really on these things, so this is gonna hold up more, less indifferent? Does this make things easier? Cuz somewhere near, and I may be on an island by myself, I would love to see us make it easier for people to get a permit to build houses cuz that, and, and less costly, because anybody wants to build more than six houses on a structure, it's pretty expensive to do the infrastructure now, and I know you hear it all the time. So I know of a couple subdivisions that have pulled out for that reason, so does this make things easier, tougher?
All right, Supervisor Bone. To answer your question, this doesn't change the process to make it easier or harder, but what I can tell you is the process that currently is available to applicants that are proposing to subdivide their property, and how the department works with applicants to see if they have a viable project or not. Currently under county code, the fee schedule, it's actually per the fee schedule, I'm sorry. Per the fee schedule, a pre-application meeting with Public Works includes up to two hours at no cost to the applicant. So this means that someone that's thinking about subdividing their property can come in, meet with Public Works, describe what they wanna do. What Public Works does is we meet with the applicant, go over the constraints that are on the project, we go over what the potential subdivision improvements would be for that project. We develop a little sketch, we develop a little sheet listing what the improvements would be. We provide a photocopy of those documents to the applicant, so they have a written documentation from Public Works of what the likely improvements are gonna be on the project. We create a project file for it, shove our copies of the notes in there, and the applicant is then able to go ahead and decide if they wanna move forward with their project or not. If they do decide to move forward with their project, they would then submit an application to the Planning and Building Department. Once Planning and Building refers it back to us, we would find our notes in the file and place the subdivision improvement requirements on it, consistent with the notes that we had made with the pre-application meeting, assuming that the project is consistent with what the applicant came in with for the pre-application meeting. The bottom line is, we wanna let any project developer know upfront what to expect before they spend any money on a project whatsoever. The cost for two hours free has been embedded in the subdivision ordinance since nineteen.
My tugboat's here to pick me up.
Where that's coming from? Okay. I don't know where it was, but please continue, Bob.
The, the cost of providing the first two hours at no cost has been in the code for many, many years. It's been adopted into the fee schedule for many, many years. There's no change to that whatsoever. We do wanna be helpful and proactive in trying to encourage subdivisions in the, in our communities.
All right. Does that help?
No, I just, somewhere near, I'd love to make it easier so we could get some houses built. But anyway, I guess not. And your, your community reach out, you talked to the few developers we have, the big bad ones and stuff. Are they okay with all this?
This is essentially a cleanup ordinance. We did not reach out to any stakeholders with respect to it, cuz it's not changing any of the fees. It's not effectively changing anything that we're doing.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Bob, for the presentation. I'm totally in line with Supervisor Bone on this one. I too would like to see how we can try and incentivize the building of homes. We all know we need to do that. You know, when I look at the recommendations here, I had a couple of suggestions. One is that I think that there are a lot of people that are sitting on a parcel that might be able to be split into two, two lots, and those individuals are homeowners, right? They typically live there. Not always, but it's pretty typical that people might be sitting on a parcel that can be split. And I just see that as a very different category versus people making multiple lots. And I just, I would like to suggest that, you know, instead of having it be twenty-five-hundred-dollar initial deposit for the first five lots, we ought to have a smaller deposit if you're just doing two lots, right? So, you know, can we try and incentivize those landowners that might have a home on a lot, but they could split it? That just is a very different category than a subdivider per se, a professional subdivider. They fit into two different categories from my mind, and, you know, if we're gonna charge this fee for up to five lots, what we're basically saying is those that are only doing a a two lot, a one lot split into two are paying higher than they probably should, whereas the ones that are doing the five lots are paying a little less than they probably should, cuz we're averaging it out. We're including everybody in the same category. You know, one to, or two to five lots. So I would have a separate category for those that are just doing a two-lot subdivision. Make it a thousand-dollar deposit, make it smaller, and then later on in that section, in the staff report discussion, it talks about the charges that can be made against the deposits include mileage, material, lab fees, labor, and seventy percent overhead rate on labor. I'm like, whoa, seventy percent overhead rate? I mean, that's a really high overhead rate. I suspect you're doing that because that's what it takes to try and break even on a five parcel split, at least based on the averages that you guys have identified at Public Works in terms of cost for these things, but I would really like to see this differentiated. The two-lot person, much less cost, much less burden, cuz I think there's a lot of those out there in the county that could be providing housing for us if we keep the, the costs and the onerousness down, and that's a way to encourage that. So that's my only change. I absolutely support, you know, what you're trying to do here, although I've said before that I think sometimes when we try to do full-cost recovery on permits, we discourage people from coming in and getting permits, and they end up just building anyway. Now, ultimately, the tax assessor catches that with Google Earth or whatever, and they, they see the improvements, and they, they tax the property whether it was permitted or not. But I do think that the higher the costs get, the more we drive people into doing things without permits, and I'd rather lose a little bit of money on the permitting costs and have a higher percentage of people entering the permit system and, and doing it properly. And I think this is exactly where we incentivize or disincentivize those kinds of things. You know, when we try to charge full, full-cost recovery, we are, in fact, gonna drive some people away from even getting permits, so that's an issue for me, and so those are my thoughts on this at this point.
Yes, Bob?
Through the chair. The ordinance as presented today could be approved by your board. The fees that Supervisor Madron are speaking of are set forth in the county fee schedule, and they could be adjusted and incorporated at a later date when the fee schedule is considered by the board, and that's a perfect opportunity to better define the fees and perhaps break out very small parcel map subdivisions from larger projects to have a smaller fee that goes along with typically the smaller type projects that there are. One of the other things that I could do as a side note to this is begin a discussion with Director Ford with respect to our parcel map projects. If my recollection is correct, there, I believe that there are opportunities that could allow parcel map subdivisions to be approved through the planning department directly without the need for a public hearing. So if something of that nature is correct, and I, I'm not saying I'm correct or not, if something of that nature could be done, that could be a way to streamline that process in getting smaller parcel map projects approved in a more timely manner. And that's a conversation that I could begin with John, and we could report back to the board with the viability of realigning how certain projects are approved.
Okay. And I'll move on to, thank you, Bob, for that. Supervisor Bushnell and then Wilson? Might wanna unmute.
Thank you, through the chair. I, I think you answered my question, but so this, this for five lots doesn't, wouldn't be for minor subdivision, which are four. It is, it would not be helpful for them, right? It would be, do you know what the individual cost is? Like, say if you were doing two or a minor subdivision? There is no incentive for that through this?
The fees are set by the fee schedule, and the fees for a project are gonna vary depending upon the complexity of the project and the team that a subdivider puts together to go ahead and move a project forward. We do have data that we can go back and mine and present back to the board that would give the costs that the department has charged to various applicants over the years for the size of the project and location of the project. If that sort of information is helpful to the board in understanding what the Public Works review and inspection costs are for a project.
So, okay, thank you. So this subdivision administration plan check doesn't, it doesn't incorporate in minor subdivisions?
It does.
It does? Five lots or more?
Well, there's, there's two components to it. There's a
So a minor subdivision would be four plus a remainder, and that would incorporate it in?
Four plus a remainder is a minor subdivision, five or more is a major subdivision, and they both have a deposit-based inspection system for reviewing the improvement plans and inspecting the work to be done.
Okay. I, I don't think that answers my question, but okay. Thank you.
Oh, perhaps I'm not understanding it.
Well, I'm just, so this, this subdivision administration plan check is for five lots or more, correct? To be, and kind of what Supervisor Madron had been talking about also, it's for five or more. So is it, it's an, is it incentive, you know, to kinda? It doesn't address the minor subdivisions? That would be individual?
All right, make sure I'm seeing the right section. Which, which code section are you specifically looking at?
Administrative plan check and inspection fees, deposit of twenty-five-hundred, initial deposit for first five lots. It's, it's what you guys are talking about also. I'm just asking if it addresses minor subdivisions? It kind of, I'm just trying to figure out, like, what Supervisor Madron had said, whether there's an incentive for the minor subdivisions, or just for the five lots or more, for a regular subdivision?
Through the chair, right now it actually says five lots or less. So if it's five lots or less, there's a certain fee, and for every lot after five lots, it's an additional five-hundred-dollar fee to the deposit. So what I was trying to suggest was that, and I think you made a good point, Michelle, that, you know, a minor subdivision is four lots or less, and anything over four lots is a major subdivision by, by definition. What I was trying to suggest is that if we could minimize the fees, and I really liked what Bob suggested about a simplified process for these parcel map subdivisions, which are basically a two-lot subdivision. If there's a way to incentivize that and reduce the cost, I think there's a lot of those around the county that are just homeowners. They're looking to maybe split the lot for their children or any number of other things, as compared to maybe a three-lot or a four-lot, which is a minor subdivision, or five lots or more, which is a major subdivision. So really, I was just trying to see if we could have a reduced burden on the small minor two-lot subdivisions, right? So I hope that clarifies.
That clarifies for me a little bit. Thank you, and so Bob, you stated that we would do that through the fee schedule? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, through the fee schedule, we'll be able to go ahead and further break out a special deposit for minor subdivisions to look at making that deposit more in line with those smaller type projects.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Now I understand your question correctly. The subdivision administration and inspection in county code 326-13 applies to all subdivisions, major and minor.
Okay.
And through the fee schedule, we'll be able to go ahead and adjust that. The next time the fee schedule's adjusted, I'll make notes that we'll have that discussion and figure out how to go ahead and look at those smaller projects, make sure that the fee is more in line with covering what the costs are so that they're not submitting a much larger deposit than what's necessary.
Thank you. That was my question, and I'm sorry I didn't word it right for you. Thank you.
So I did see Director Ford on here with his hand up, but he is since off. Did you still have something you wanted to add, Director?
Well, just one to add to what Deputy Director Bronckel is mentioning in in terms of the overall process. I think a lot of what I hear being asked for is a simplified process that equates to less fees and just making it easier to get a two lot split. And and that is a bigger discussion than than this. And and that is something that we can take as direction and run with. I I think what Public Works is trying to do right now is is just simplify the ordinance itself and then allow the fees to be adjusted at a later date.
Okay, thank you, Director Ford. Supervisor Wilson, and then Madron? Unmute, please.
Sorry about that. So I just want to firstly, I I support staff's recommendation. And you can count this as a motion to to move forward with staff recommendation. But if there, you know, there's conversation that was brought up, as you know, by Supervisor Madron related to these, you know, making fees or processes, you know, easier or cost less with relationship to subdivisions and how we grade date, you know, those versus small versus large. I mean, I would add that, you know, we we have to understand that for the most part, you know, that a lot of these subdivisions really end up, you know, to cost the county more money in the long run to provide services, because we don't have development fee structures like most other counties do. And so there are long-term costs to all of these, to these, these questions. And and quite frankly, we could be targeted about that in terms like there probably are areas near services or in, with regards to that, that that this conversation would make more sense. And again, we're really putting at risk, especially again with principally permitting residential development on our ag and timberlands. You know, there's a lot of pressure, as we can see currently, right now, externally onto our community, especially around the Humboldt Bay area, which you can see behind me, where you know, there's not a lot of houses for sale, but I can tell you there are people from out of the area. I'm sure that everyone's good people and all that's other stuff, but I'm just saying the external, the external real estate pressure is is to develop into these lands that we think are kind of preserved. And we don't have a lot of of stringent requirements on that currently. And so I just want to say, you know, before we kind of jump forward real, you know, on this, it's not just about somebody subdividing for their kid, which I frankly, I think is valuable in that conversation. But, you know, then that applies to everybody across the board. And I just want to make sure that we're really careful about the long-term costs and long-term impacts of what we're talking about with relationship to sprawl and and the impacts, quite frankly, the financial impacts of that in terms of how we can provide services. And there's a there's a lot about that out there in terms of information. I just want to make sure that we're giving direction to staff that that we're talking about, you know, being strategic about that. That's all I'm saying. But with that, I do make a motion that we move forward with staff recommendation.
Okay.
Second, the motion.
Okay. And then I just wanted to say, I know I haven't been really tough on make the motion, get a second, and then having conversation or have your conversation, then make the motion, but I'd like to see us try to go back to that process again. Because it's like, just let some, yeah, back up a little bit. Okay. So but I have not been encouraging that, so I highly encourage we try. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, well, I hope I was quick enough with the second, but at any rate, you know, I very much appreciate what Supervisor Wilson is saying, and I'm certainly not advocating for sprawl. I I absolutely agree that it's the infilling, where there's fire services, where there's roads, where there's water, et cetera. Those are important elements, and you're absolutely right about the cost of doing things without thinking about it carefully enough. But there's also the cost of not having enough housing, you know, and and so in all of these things, we're doing this trying to do a cost benefit analysis, you know, because when we don't provide enough housing, the costs to the county are astronomical as well in terms of homelessness and just everything else that goes on when we don't have enough housing. So trying to find that sweet spot, right? I think that's what we probably all want, is to figure out where we can grow, where we can put more housing, where we have those services, but trying to reduce the burden on doing that so that we can actually get that housing built. That's really all I'm trying to do, and I appreciated your comments there, Supervisor Wilson.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'm going to go and see if there's anyone in the public who'd like, Supervisor Madron?
Well, yeah, just one last question. I appreciate that the fee schedule is a separate matter, but I believe we just approved the fee schedule a couple of weeks ago. So is it going to be a year, or can we bring something back sooner in regards to not only a fee schedule amendment, but also the conversation with John Ford, with Director Ford and the Planning Department on a simplified version for a small parcel map subdivision? So I would like to see, you know, if the board would would agree that those are urgent matters. If we can try and do those things, you know, sooner than a year from now, that would be really good from my perspective.
Okay, thank you. I will go to the public and I'll come back to the board. There is one hand that's raised. And uh, at this time, if, I believe it's Dottie, but if you're 0151, please press star six to unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. So thanks very much for this conversation. I think it's really important. Having a parcel that's bigger than what somebody needs or already has two houses gives people an opportunity to be a first time homeowner or at least have housing. So it makes a lot of sense to me. I completely agree that it is so expensive and so terrifying for people to be homeless without housing or having housing insecurity. So I'm, there's no question that if the fees for splitting one lot so that you have two little lots is the same as doing a five part of five, what would you call it, a five split on a parcel, is a way different thing with a way different intent. So I think that it should absolutely be something, maybe that the county even encourages. Maybe they drop the fees for doing it. Because that seems really intense and and extreme, but it is extreme. Being a homeless person, being a victim of a crime, being on the streets and being assaulted is a really horrible thing. And I know because of that, I was 20 years old, that happened to me. We need way better. And this is a simple, simple thing that'll cost the county almost nothing. And instead, it can give people homeownership or at least housing security. So I definitely think that we should consider a one or two lot split as being almost nothing as far as costs go, because it's a benefit to you more than it is to anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Excuse me. There's no one else from the public with their hand raised? So we'll come back to the board. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I'm willing to go to vote whenever you feel like going to vote on this. There's a lot to be said, but I think this is a bigger discussion. And just, just so, I mean, I know the the political and where we all have to go on that. But in the end run, when you talk to somebody that's building a house, it is not as much the fee that they pay, it's the return on investment that takes so long. And John Ford is now working on second and third houses in a subdivision being an over the counter permit, because most of the legwork has been done. It doesn't have to be, so he's working on on streamlining that. We're not going to handle this housing shortage by one house at a time. We're gonna, we're gonna need those larger, you know, oh my god subdivisions, much like a lot of us live in. You know, either smaller, larger, or whatever the case may be. And and with that being said, when you build, when you, you know, whatever price is, when you move out of a lesser house into a bigger house, that allows your house to be bought by somebody that maybe can afford it. So those are the things we have to have. And the other problem is, is you talked to all the people moving up here, they they would like a little room around them, because where they're escaping from, they don't want to be on elevators, crowded streets, all those things because of this recent pandemic. That's, they're being able to work from home and they want to separate out. So it's a much bigger discussion, and we can throw all the hoopla out there you want, but I I I think it's the ROI and the time it takes from the time, hey, I got four acres, I want to build eight houses, to the point you can build the eight houses, so.
All right, so we do have a motion for staff recommendation and a second, and lots of work and conversation could probably be had, but unless I see a hand goes, go up from any of you, I'm going to go back to ask Ryan to do a roll call. Here, Ryan, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Pass this five oh.
Bob? So um, the next item, a public hearing is coming to us from Public Works regarding speed humps. And so at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing, and then I'll turn this over to staff for their report. Is that you again, Bob?
Yes, it is. Neeland Road is an arterial road. And in order to allow speed humps on an arterial road, the county speed hump policy requires a public hearing. In this particular case, there are no nearby parallel roads in which traffic would divert to. It's essentially Neeland Road, or you go down Highway 36 to State Route 101 and take that. So we're not looking at any diversion of traffic on nearby parallel routes. The residents of the community are supportive of the speed humps. They are seeking approval for speed humps in order to qualify for grant funding for the construction of the humps. Due to the timeframe in meeting the deadline for the grant funding, they're requesting a public hearing in May. They haven't been able to go ahead and secure support from the underlying property owner because the underlying property owners held entitled by a group of property owners. And that group of property owners periodically needs to go ahead and discuss business with respect to the property. And they aren't scheduled to meet prior to the funding deadline. So therefore, at this time, we do not have support from the underlying property owner. However, the applicant has obtained support from Cal Fire and other law enforcement agencies in support of the speed hump. So at this time, Public Works is working with RCAA to update our speed hump policy. The existing policy's been in place since 2007. Since that time, we've learned what works, what doesn't work. And we need to go ahead and update the policy to streamline the process so that it helps communities get speed humps installed without going through public hearings if it's not absolutely necessary. So at this time, the department recommends that your board consider public testimony and approve the speed humps on Neeland Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. I will go and open up the public comment portion of this hearing. And believe it or not, there are no people that would like to comment. So that was at that, we'll go back to the board and Supervisor Bone?
Bob, before I make a motion, do you do you see, and I know there's an owners group that owns, they own most of the town now, if I'm not mistaken, so do you foresee opposition? Because they've pretty much walked away from the town in a roundabout way. I know it's for sale again. I think.
It's my understanding that the owners of the town are out of the area owners. So it's not people living on site. It's an investment property for them. As such, with them not necessarily living on site, I do not think that they'd necessarily be opposed to it. One would assume that anything that helps improve the quality of life or the development on their properties would be a benefit to the overall value of their property. So I'm not envisioning that there would necessarily be any opposition from that. It's not going to create any cost to the underlying landowner?
I'll make, and I, and I, and I do know that that road is, you know, going up to Ike Way and all those. I know there is some transient traffic that goes up that way, and I think the biggest problem is the kids come out of school and are pretty relaxed when they come out of school. The speed hump will also allow people to slow down, but the biggest thing is it also makes a certain amount of noise that kids will be aware there's a car coming. So I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Chair, a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Supervisor Bushnell? Whoops, sorry. The county council's raised his hand.
Sorry, Chair. The staff recommendation is approve or deny, so I think we should be specific that it's approved.
Open the, uh, to approve the speed hump, sorry.
I am in my second to approve.
Thank you, Jefferson. We just wanted to make sure that you were watching us. All right. And does anyone else have a comment they wanted to make? Michelle?
Thank you. I was going to make the motion too. I just want to recognize that this area is, it has a school right in the middle. If you look at the diagram, and that the traffic coming down the hill portion is very fast with people coming out of that school area. I go into Bridgeville often, and it it will be very helpful to that area and that small community. And thank you for the the motion, Supervisor Bone, and the second mic. Supervisor Wilson?
Sorry, you can take my place on it if you want.
No, I don't care. I just want to say that, you know, I do go there often, and I'm really supportive of this.
All right.
Every day.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, Bob, how long has this been sort of in the process? When was this first brought forward to your department?
I don't recall the exact date when the applicant came forward. I believe it's been within the past month or so that we were approached. And we've been working with the applicant on helping them get the approvals from the various law enforcement and first responder agencies so that we could go ahead and have this item presented before you. The the challenge has been with the underlying property owner and the frequent nature at which that group meets to go ahead and discuss matters relative to their property up here.
Well, thank you, Bob, but my, the point I just wanted to make was, you know, this this is, we're getting, we're turning these around faster, and and I really appreciate that very much, you know, many of these, you know, if you compare what the process it would take in to do a speed hump five years ago versus one year ago versus now, you can just see that we're, you guys are getting better at this, and the policies are getting better, and you're still working on them, and I just appreciate that very much. So I just want to kudos to you guys for adapting and moving forward for our community. Really appreciate it.
And Supervisor Bushnell, then Bone?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the work that the Bridgeville Community Department did with this also and securing the, trying to secure the grant funding so it doesn't cost any additional funding from the county. And also recognizing what the Public Works has been working towards with them. The community, the Bridgeville Community District is, has done a lot of work on this, and and they've been, I went to a meeting there six months ago, and it's, you know, they were talking about it then because of the concerns of the school.
Supervisor Bone?
And fully aware, one of the things is, is they need to get this approval so they can go for grant funding, because you have to understand the county does not incur expenses. And if you're trying to put it around a high travel, a high travel pedestrian area or a school, it's a lot easier. If you think people are driving through your neighborhood fast, it's going to take a little bit longer. It's just the the way it goes, because I think forty, quite a few speed humps that are put in are actually taken out after they're put in when people realize, well, this isn't the the God given into everything. So just, I think people want it all. You have to pay for it, you have to maintain it, stripe, sign, the whole nine yards. So it's, it's not an easy thing to do if not around the school or a, or a trail that will support it.
Supervisor Madron?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's nice to see some of these things moving pretty quickly. Very much appreciate Deputy Director Bronckel and his staff's efforts to really streamline and get these things to the table. One of the biggest delays in getting this thing actually done is the cost of constructing them. And then, of course, the county takes over the maintenance once they're constructed, including signs, striping, and in
and the rest of it, according to the ordinance. The county takes over the maintenance. That's what it says. At any rate, um, I just wanted to make a big shout out to all the contractors in our community because so many of these are actually being built for free by donations from Mercer Fraser, from Wallin Construction, and a whole lot of other contractors in the community that have stepped up and are, uh, helping to do a lot of these. I'm glad this group is hopefully, hopefully going to be able to get some grant monies. Uh, offline, I'd love to know more about what grant source, um, you're looking at, uh, for that. But at any rate, just want to give a big shout out to the contractors out there because they, in many ways, they're the ones that are helping make this happen. Am I wrong, Bob? Uh, isn't, doesn't the county take over maintenance once they're built?
Once they're built, it's the county's obligation to go ahead and, and maintain them in the future. If, uh, the community decides that they don't want them, it's up to the community to, to pay for the cost to go ahead and remove them as well. But as long as they're going to remain in place, the county's going to go ahead and maintain them, keep up with the striping on them, uh, keep up with the signs.
Bob, initial striping and signs are on the community though, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the, what the county does is we do require that the county install the signs to make sure that they're installed correctly. So the applicant would pay the county to install the, the signing and striping to make sure it's installed correctly with all the requirements that are in the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
And, and that's, um, in their grant application, all of that, um, they have addressed.
I haven't seen their grant application, so I'm assuming that they have rolled in all the applicable costs into it.
And Supervisor Madron, just, just so you know, our county, our county Public Works bends over backwards to do it as cheap and as feasible as possible because it is for public good. So that's may have been where, but it is that they have to pick up the cost. They keep the cost extremely low because it is a public benefit.
All right. So with the, all that conversation, um, I think we're ready to vote. Ryan Lee, please do a roll call.
Yes, Chair. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this five oh.
All right. So we now close that public hearing. And thank you, Bob, for being with us. Um, and we will, I'd like, we're moving on to closed session next. And then after we hear from our counsel, I do want to let, um, uh, make some comments on folks we are journeying in memory of. Figured we might as well do it before we go to closed session. But Jefferson, can you brief us on what we're going in for?
Yes, thank you Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 to discuss existing litigation in the case of State of California versus Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services at all, case number CD180143.
Thank you very much. I'll go to public comment. There are no hands that are raised. Come back to the board. Um, between when we, uh, leave and that, I'd like a 10 minute break. So we will be taking a 10 minute break. But in the meantime, um, I mentioned we are going to be adjourning in memory today of, uh, from three community, or three community members who we just recently lost. Um, and, um, those would be Judge John Morrison, Dave Nicholson, and Timmy Gray. So at this time, I would like to ask, I know Supervisor Bone, um, probably may have some comments on, um, Mr. Nicholson and, uh, the judge.
Dave, I'll start with Dave. Dave used to have the garbage company in Burn Dale, was very active assistant fire chief in Burn Dale. Um, always played Uncle Sam. He was Mike Jones' Eureka version in Fortuna. Um, and when he went out of active duty, he transferred over to the Fire Commission Board in Fortuna. Um, worked for Dick Lindsey at John Decker for quite a while after he sold the garbage company. Um, great guy, maybe one of the funniest guys I've ever met. You know, it's, everything was a humdinger or bar none. Um, you could always hear him saying, and, uh, he was active, uh, in the community. His wife Cheryl, um, they're just, just, just a good guy. And it's going to leave a, act of a hole in the community. And I'm sure Lawn and the Fire Department's going to recognize him in a great way and, and things like that. But he was just, he was just one of those good guys that I happen to know for, from his days in Burn Dale and things like that. And then Big John Morrison, who may be the, I'll tell you what, they could have done a reality show long before they did Judge Judy and everything else. John may have been the funniest guy. I used to stop into traffic court every once in a while just to watch John. He once stopped, one time a lady tried to make an excuse for her son for doing 90 miles an hour in a 65 and she want, got up, told the judge it was her fault because she didn't have the odometer fixed right. So he took her license for 30 days instead of her son's. And that may have been the funniest thing I'd ever seen. But Jim and John, uh, brother Silas, um, Jim and John were my family's attorneys and earlier before John became a judge and Jim followed through all the way to the end, um, for my parents. So, um, great local family, been here forever, took over their parents' law practice. And I, so, um, I think most of us knew John from being in the courthouse. I, his wife Bev and his, his daughter. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big hole to fill, but he was also, to watch that six foot four, 250 pound frame get out of, get out of a stock car was probably just as thrilling as watching him race because he, he was the racing judge. When he was a judge, he raced stock cars. So he had both of the, both Dave and, and John left big holes and big impressions. Like, like I always say, if you're going to leave an impression, make it a good one. So both of them did that 10 times over. So it is a sad day, but we, thank you for honoring him.
Yeah. And I, I wanted to add, I mean, I think you captured John perfectly. Um, he, but he was also, he was just such a good person. I mean, he and, and Bev, his wife is, she's amazing as well. So I was really, I was really sad to, to see, um, the news. But, um, I also, my favorite, everyone has a traffic court and thank goodness it wasn't me who was in traffic court. But, um, I think the favorite one I had is when somebody was going to have their license taken away, he had a, he asked them, well, how'd you get here today? You know? And they said, well, I drove my car. And he says, well, if you drive your car to leave here, you know, anyway, the, the punishment.
Follow people out to their car, just so you know.
Yeah. It was, it was just.
It is.
He was an amazing person. Um, and then Supervisor Wilson, I think you knew, uh, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, honor the life of Timothy Gray. Um, some people know him as Tim and, and Timmy. Uh, he was really, uh, a, a big figure in our local culture with relationship, especially around music. And, uh, he was a local producer, but a local musician, probably one of the best drummers in this area and has been for many decades. Uh, but his real, I would say his contributions, uh, spanned also in his compositions where he wrote so many of the, of so much of the music that revolved around Delarte and Blue Lake and the Mad River Festival, uh, even so much as to, uh, composing, um, uh, one year, the what was called Blue Lake, the Opera. And it was probably one of the, you know, in terms of theater of place, he just was really a person who, um, really contributed to all those things. If you were, ever went to the arcade or Playhouse, if you ever went to the, the, um, any of the music events around Humboldt County, both northern and southern, he was, uh, either on a mixing board or in, in a band and, uh, really just there and was just such a wonderful person and really left a big, uh, impression. Uh, and, and the breadth of his work, quite frankly, um, is, is, I think to be really, um, congratulated and, and thanked. We just thank him for his, his, his contribution. So with that, I just want to honor Timothy Gray today in, in memory.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Um, Supervisor Bushnell?
I just wanted to say, um, about Dave Nicholson, I only had the opportunity to meet him twice. I had a really good conversation with him and was looking forward to working with him with the Fortuna area and, um, that I am so sorry for his family, the Fortuna and Burn Dale communities. Um, he obviously had a huge presence and meant a lot to so many people and so many, um, he, public service, it sounds like he did it amazing.
Well, with that, um, we will go into closed session at 11:30. Excuse you. Bless you. Whatever it is, we'll be gone.